You're gonna have to sit Indian-style? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Concha style.
Concha style.
Okay. Hi, John. Thank you. Yeah, if you guys are ready. Oh, shit. I'm a little shaky, I don't know why. It's the planning commission meeting.
Good evening, welcome to the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. Let's go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. And welcome.
Yes. Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Commissioner Demond.
Here.
Vice Chair Holt.
I'm here.
And Acting Chair. Chair Hernandez is absent this evening.
Great. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December 19th, 2018. I was absent, so I'll be abstaining.
I move that we approve the minutes slated December 19th, 2018.
I'll second -- oh, I'm sorry.
Arm wrestle.
So, just a question before we vote on that. At the top of page three, there was a line that says regarding risk associated with impoundments. This does not say it has to go to the Coastal Commission. I assume that is, is an "it." And I'm a little -- I'm having trouble remembering precisely what the notion was there. That's the sort of thing that I would usually say, but I don't think I would've said it quite like that. So, with your blessings, I will go back and hear the tape and try to clarify that. Other than that, I'm fine with these minutes.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, move on. First item on the agenda is the study session on the Pillar -- oh, I'm sorry. Public comment. Public comment period, an opportunity to provide comment on items not on the agenda. There are green cards available back there for any members of the public who wish to speak on items not on the agenda. I don't have any cards. So, jump up now if you wish to speak. Otherwise, we'll close the public comment period and move on to our first public hearing item, the study session on Pillar Point RV Park Public Restroom Project. Jill.
Thank you, Vice Chair Holt, Commission. Good evening. Just one note for the order of the room. We've been getting feedback over the last few meetings about sound. If you can't hear the commissioners, anyone at the podium, or staff, please just raise your hand and then we'll be more aware to speak directly into the microphone. Thank you. All right. To introduce this item, I'd like to give just a brief background and note for the sake of the Planning Commission, the scope of this study session discussion. The item before you is a study session focused on the potential for adding a public restroom to improve the public access to a restroom in the area of the Pillar Point RV Park. Yes, the city does have an application right now for an after-the-fact coastal development permit for this project. We've been working on that with our co-applicants, which includes the RV Park operator as well as the Harbor District, who have applied for that permit. But tonight, we really want to focus on the upside of reviewing this site and what can be done to make coastal access better for the public. And so, we're really interested in community input about where a restroom could go and what kinds of facilities it would include, and of course, the Planning Commission's direction. And then, this will come back to you as part of that coastal development permit in the future. Now, if people give input about the RV Park or things beyond that, it's outside the scope of our agenda item. We will make note of the comments, but that isn't really the purview of the Planning Commission's feedback for us tonight. So, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Brittany Cosellino, who will give the staff report on this.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Can you hear me okay? All right, just a quick orientation to the project site. This is the Pillar Point RV Park. It's located at the northern terminus of the city limits between Surfers Beach and the Beach House Hotel. It's a four-acre site in the commercial visitor-serving zoning district, and it's in a very popular coastal recreation area between the beach, the trail, the onsite nearby accommodations, Sam's Shrotter House, and the harbor. Jill gave a little background on history already. I just want to point out here, the important thing for tonight is that the CDP is giving us a really great opportunity to address the -- what is that?
Like, Clippy is back.
So, the CDP application is providing us with a really great opportunity to address the onsite restroom situation and provide a much-needed public benefit on this site. Staff is hoping for Planning Commission and public input on site and design alternatives to help us move forward with the permit processing and project funding. So, the existing restroom was built in the interior of the RV Park, in the red circle there. It is not readily visible or accessible to the public, and it just is not meeting the public's needs for this highly-used area. So, the staff has been working with Harbor District and the RV Park operators on options for a new restroom in a new location. And considerations that have gone into the site location options, in no particular order, are the following: maximizing public visibility and accessibility, ADA access, minimizing viewshed impacts, visual compatibility with the surrounding area, avoiding coastal hazards, public space design principles, the required setbacks for the commercial visitor-serving zone, utility connections, and retaining the existing inventory of onsite public parking and RV parking spaces. So, with these considerations, we've arrived at these four different alternatives. The first involves repurposing the existing restroom, and the remaining three involve a new restroom at a new location. So, the focus for these new locations were to be on the east side of the trail, furthest from potential wave action, avoiding the coastal habitat and dune area, and being located on relatively flat sites that site starts to slope between the RV Park and the trail as you move towards the Beach House. So, we really had to stay on the southern end of the site. Just a quick note on coastal hazards in this area. We are looking for a site that will provide safety from coastal hazard risks for the life of the project. We are operating under the assumption that the existing revetment will stay in place, so that will protect from erosion risks. We have been using USGS's Arcosar Future Sea Level Rise Projection Maps to look at potential flooding risks. So, this scenario that you can see here is a 5.7-feet sea level rise scenario with a 100-year storm. So, that's a pretty extreme scenario, and you can see that the blue flooding inundation does not reach the sites that we have chosen for our site alternatives. So, going through the site alternatives, the first, repurposing the existing restroom. This would involve at a minimum ADA upgrades and additional signage and perhaps a new pathway, so people can really know of their ability to use the public restroom and know where to find it. Staff does not recommend this alternative because of ADA compatibility challenges, lack of visibility from the trail and from the beach area, user conflicts with the RV Park attendees. There are many concerns here. So, with that, we do encourage looking at a new location. So, alternative number two is where the rock is, as we're calling it. The site is immediately adjacent to the ADA parking space in the public parking area. It's relatively flat, easily accessible and visible from the trail and the parking lot, and it's, of the three new location alternatives, it's the furthest inland from the rock revetment, so providing the most distance from potential wave action and flooding hazards. So, the Harbor District has been really helpful in helping us prepare for this alternatives analysis. They put up some story polls to give us a bit of a sense of visual impacts. I have some photos of these that I'll go through for each site alternative. They're not meant to be exact height or dimensions, and they're representations. So, for the site I just went over, this is facing west, as if you were coming into the RV Park site from Highway 1, and the red mesh there would be the maximum, or ideal maximum height. And facing south, as if you were walking towards Surfers Beach in front of the site. And facing northwest, as if you're walking towards the harbor along the site. And I can go back through any of these at the end, if anyone likes. Moving on to alternative number three. This site is also relatively flat, very easily accessible and visible from the trail and the parking lot. It is about 10 feet closer to the rock revetment from the previous alternative we just went through. All of these sites, in order for them to be easily accessible and visible to the public, means there are going to be some visual impacts, and we will look to minimize that through sighting and design alternatives, but just something to keep in mind. So, here is story polls facing west. Facing northwest. And facing east, this gives you a sense of the surrounding built environment and height compared to that lamp post right there. You can also see the story polls for site alternative number four in the background there. So, site alternative number four is definitely the most visually tucked away. There is a significant grade change between Highway 1 and the trail level in this location, so the restroom would ideally be tucked up against the bottom of that slope in the back corner of the parking lot there. It is the closest of the three to the rock revetment, approximately 30 feet to the inland extent of the rocks there. But again, very flat, easily accessible, and visible from the trail. So, here's a photo from the highway level, so you can really see the grade change down to the trail level where the bathroom would be located. This would minimize viewshed impacts as you're driving by the site along Highway 1. Facing east, you can see the curb kind of separating the restroom location from the parking lot. That's something we could address through the project to make the restroom accessible from both the trail and the parking area. And facing south from the public parking area. So, another option could be to locate the restroom within the public parking area, essentially taking up one or two of the parking spaces. This would give us a little more flexibility with moving the restroom further inland, a little more protection from coastal hazard risks. We would need to look at where we could replace those parking spaces. We are trying to maximize public access here. This is something we have floated to the Coastal Commission. They are mulling it over. We've also been to the site with the Coastal Commission. They've looked at all these alternatives with the story polls up. They're generally very supportive of the projects and mostly of anything that maximizes public access, avoids coastal hazards, and minimizes visual impacts. Coastal Commission staff, yes, not the commission themselves yet. Thank you, Jill. So, that takes us into design alternatives. Some considerations that went into design options were compatibility with the natural surroundings, minimizing viewshed impacts, resistance to wave action and coastal climate, potential need for a future relocation due to sea level rise, and utility connections. So, we've researched a couple different options here. Alternative number one is an example of a modular restroom. These are prefabricated, placed on concrete slab foundations. The shed roof design gives potential for solar roof. There's also water storage options, as you can see in the bottom photo there. These are aesthetic and fitting with an outdoor setting. We do want to consider functionality, though ideally, we are hooking up to both sewer and water in this project. So, alternative number two is an example of a masonry block structure. This is very similar to the design concept that was submitted in the CDP application. It's also really similar to a restroom you're probably familiar with, the new county restroom at the Marotta Surf Park by Miramar Beach. Very functional, fitting with the outdoors, also options for solar roof, additional amenities, as you can see in the bottom photo, with the water fountains and showers and sinks. Again, ideally hooking up to both sewer and water. So, the first two options we just went through might be a little more visibly pleasing, but difficult to retreat in the future if that is a design goal that we're after, if we're anticipating needing to move the restroom due to sea level rise. So, that's where design alternative number three comes in, something a little more portable. We could improve aesthetics with exterior treatment. Not ideal, because we do want to provide the best option where we can. We're given the opportunity to try to do that in this project. So, again, this would need a lot of maintenance. Pumping, it would need water storage. Amenities would have to be separate, you know, water fountains, showers. But movable, if needed. Okay, so, these are not exhaustive options. We welcome your feedback, any additional ideas, input. Everything is welcome. We want to hear from you. Jill, do you have anything to add? The Harbor District interim director, John Morn, is here and available for questions. And that's it.
Great, thank you very much, Morn. Any clarifying questions from the Commission?
So, from a background standpoint, even though the Harbor Commission owns the property, it's on Half Moon Bay City, so Half Moon Bay has to provide CDPs and other stuff, just to get, to clarify what we're doing, since the Harbor Commission is a separate legal entity. So, you know, tell me how those two things mesh. I have a second question. Is it owned by the Harbor District? So, do they keep it clean? Does Half Moon Bay keep it clean? You know, if you want to complain, who do you go to? So, those are my two questions.
For your second question, we're still working through funding and the long-term maintenance for the facility, and those are ongoing productive dialogues, but we haven't concluded that. You will see more information about that when this comes back to you for the coastal development permit. For your first question, the property is Harbor District property. They lease to the RV Park operator, and so, the Harbor District and the RV Park are co-applicants in this case. And the city's local coastal program is the certified planning document for issuing CDPs for this property, even though it is owned by another jurisdiction. Yes.
Thank you. Welcome back, it's nice to see you. So, a couple of questions. First, what is the projected lifetime of the project for planning? Can you hear me better now? I apologize. What is the projected lifetime? What is the planning lifetime horizon for the project that we'd be using if we're trying to, you know, make a net present value kind of analysis of the projects and their risk of needing to be relocated for sea level rise constraints?
We're looking on the order of 20 to 40 years. We understand, for example, that some of the funding agencies require a minimum of a 20-year life, and of course, we would like to get more out of it than that.
I see. And on the maps, you had mentioned that in some cases, we thought perhaps we could have them on a water and the sewer line. Could you just remind us and show the public where the water and sewer lines are with respect to the alternatives, please? If we know. I mean, this is a horseshoes-and-hand grenades kind of question. And if you want me to hold that question for later, I can do that, too. It's up to you. Excuse me, sir. You need to hit the microphone button and speak into that micro -- you can just pick it up, because you're a tall guy. There you go. It's green now. Thank you.
My name's John Morn, I'm interim general manager with the San Mateo County Harbor District. First of all, we welcome, of course, this opportunity for the public to be able to weigh in, and we appreciate the city of Half Moon Bay and the Commission for entertaining these concept ideas. If you wanted to go back to where the restroom and the road, one of the bigger pictures, Brittany? Our staff have looked for drawings that would indicate if there are water or sewer lines going closer along the coast where these sites are, but at present, all we are aware of is there are water lines going along US-1 and waste, you know, sewage going along US-1, and obviously, to where the existing restroom is. So, I think there'd have to be laterals potentially going from US-1.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. You know, I have other questions, but I think I'll wait. Maybe, hopefully, we'll hear from the public and get insights from your questions.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Evans.
So, is one of the fundamental questions we're -- maybe this is a silly question, but one of the questions we're trying to decide, is this a permanent or temporary building?
Yes.
That means yes?
Yes, that's something we're hoping for feedback on, and ideally, something more permanent and hooked up to sewer and water.
And then, in our packet was drawings from John Matthews that were sent here, received January 2018. Is there a reason why these -- are they still connected to the project? And I guess part of this question is, is our staff designing this? Are we hiring someone to kind of do this project from start to finish?
Staff is certainly not designing this project. We are trying to support your evaluation of sites by having some sample structures. The original application included a permanent masonry structure. We had feedback from funding agencies that they were concerned about longevity of different locations that we were looking at and the inability to relocate such a structure. So, we decided to step back from that and really look at the site differently, and that's why we're here, to get the community's input and specifically, your expertise.
Thank you.
So, two quick questions. Going into the considerations for the site alternatives, wondering to what extent sightlines for, say, bikers, folks on the trail were considered? And second question would be whether what the long-term maintenance costs of the different design alternatives, if they were considered. So, I don't necessarily need an answer for that, but yeah, two thoughts, so. Okay, so with that, we can move into, move into the public comment portion. I've got five cards here. If anybody wishes to speak on this, please feel free to fill out a green card over at the area there and provide it to me. Our first speaker will be John Olem. You need to get closer to the -- basically swallow it. Thank you very much. The second card I have, Dan Haggerty. Just get closer. Yeah, I apologize, it's -- It's important for us to be able to use a microphone for people who are watching.
Okay, I'll stretch my back here, and it appears to be working now, so.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Dan Haggerty. Lived in El Granada, very close to this location for 30 years. I know this location very well. I'm there a lot. I miss the shower. They used to be there, some of you know about it. Some of you know about it. I miss being able to use the existing restroom. That trail is heavily used. There's a lot of people there. Some people, you know, I think, another time, we talk about the speed limit signs on this trail, but it's used a lot, and there's a lot of fast bike riders that I think sometimes ride too fast, especially when they're crossing, passing, you know, families, right? Groups of people. So I have big concern about anything close to the trail. Additionally, I believe in these last 30 years that we've been just having one attack over another about, with the ocean views. So I'm, I don't know, I don't like any of these proposed site alternatives because they're going to block views. I like the idea of having it, you know, if for some reason that existing restroom can't, you know, is too far away from the trail, you know, let's put in the first two, take out two RV spaces on the southern side, closer to Highway 1, or even, well, I think everybody would agree, further back would be less obstructive to any views. Low profile, nothing, nothing more than's needed. Yeah, I really, can anybody give me an answer? Why, you know, why aren't the existing restrooms open? And, you know, why do we have to, why do we have to be here tonight to talk about, you know, blocking more views? Why can't we, you know, do it the right way and, you know, either remodel the existing or make it a little closer, make a new one closer to the trail, but not like right up against the trail? I, Brian, I guess, made the concern about, you know, setbacks for trail users and everything, so I think that's a big issue. I hope that we can hear some other comments. Can anybody respond to any of my questions?
Love to respond, but during the portion of the public comment period, we're not able to provide direct comments and responses back and forth. I think staff or between us will be able to respond to your comments if they close the public comment period.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I hope you guys do the right thing.
Okay. Our next speaker, Lisa Ketchum.
Does this work? Okay, Lisa Ketchum, Moss Beach. It's my impression that when the RV park was developed in the, whenever it was, late 90s, those sites are all, they all have water and sewer hookups. I could be wrong, but that was my impression. So in other words, all those RV sites already have utility hookups, and I think that the three proposed sites are all too close to the coastal hazards, two being the least egregious, but still also view-blocking. So given that the existing restroom has been there since the 70s, and it looks like it occupies at least enough room for two RVs, if it's not suitable, if it's closed, it's not suitable to be reopened, then perhaps two RVs could be relocated to that place, and the restroom could be developed, as Dan was referring to, at the southern end of either one of those two RV rows, next to the, you know, the two back ones. And the, contrary to the landscape plan that was approved for this development, the applicant, the, Lessey has planted a row of cypress trees along the highway, blocking all public views there, and so to put the restroom tucked behind those trees that are already blocking the views wouldn't bother it. So that would be my first choice at the southern end of those RV rows. And if that's a problem, losing an RV space, like I say, they could put it over, put the RV over where the restroom is. If, and then as far as, I think the masonry building is the best bet, and if it needs to be outside of that RV park footprint, I'd put it a little bit northwest of Number Two. Like I say, the public views are already blocked by the cypress trees, and it doesn't hurt to block the views of the RVs. It would still be near the trail. I don't know, but the best place would be within the park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ed Lourainis.
I have a short PowerPoint. Well, that's getting set up. I'll just say my thank yous. Thank you very much for having this meeting. As a member of Surf Rider, as far back as 2002, I've been trying to work, or we have been trying to work for a solution for restrooms there. And so I'd like to say we've been really patient, but we really haven't been patient. We've been working, working a lot to try to make this happen, and for many reasons, it's never, it's never happened. So let's see if I can get this to work. Oh, yeah. So this, for people that haven't been there, this is the view of that corner. On the left side of the screen is where the, where I guess Site Four is, so you can see that this was just a three-foot tide. I'll go through these pictures quickly. This is if you drive into the RV lot, this is what you're presented with, and then when you pay your fee, if you're going to pay a fee, this is what you see. This thing is evaporating because of lack of maintenance, and as you can see, there's no, there's no indication where that bathroom is, even if you did pay. This, you might say, oh, well, maybe this is it. Well, you go there, and you think, well, maybe I'm wrong. Oh, it can't be the bathroom. Well, I don't know, maybe this side. Nope, employees only. This is what you're presented with. So here's my suggestion. Take that section that's surrounded by red and turn that into day-use parking. Renovate the bathrooms, put some signage. If you do day-use parking, day-use vehicles aren't as big as RVs, so you could actually put a pathway from the coastal trail, put some markings like a crosswalk, across that section of the entrance, and that's a solution that could happen fairly rapidly. It's away from any coastal hazards. It's further away from coastal hazards. Not away from them, but it's further away, and it's a relatively easy solution. And if that doesn't have any traction, then still use that area as day-use parking, as some others have suggested, move the bathrooms over to the southern corner. That way, you're not, you will be building another structure, but at least you won't be destroying the view corridor. I think that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for the pictures. Next speaker, Tim Pond, and that's the last green card I have at this time, so just a reminder, if you want to speak on this item, please fill out a speaker's card and bring it up here.
My name's Tim Pond, and I've been a coastside resident for 30 years. I listened to a couple of other speakers, and I really liked the sighting of the project in, in a little further from the trail, because at any building, you're going to get people congregating, and little kids, and bikes, and everybody else moving along at high speed, and anything in close proximity is going to create a hazard for that. And also, the way the waves have been coming over that break in the last couple of weeks, you can see that that whole area is set to be inundated soon. It's sad tonight that the El Granada Sanitary District isn't here, because they own this huge piece of property on the other side of the road where everybody parks, and there already is a bathroom over there called the Riparian Habitat. And that is actually sad, because this is the most-used beach that I know of in San Mateo County, and yet there is not a single bathroom available here. And the fact of the matter is that there is, there should be a bathroom across the street where people park. If you go to any major beach, you have a shower, you put your wet suit on, you go to the bathroom, you go to the beach, and you come back to your car. The seven or eight parking spots there only provide for probably a hundredth of the people that are at that beach on a busy day. So sighting the bathroom in a little bit more, I like the idea of tearing it down and then putting it where a couple RV sites are, because I think the ADA access will be difficult from the trail if it's set back up in there due to the sloping of the thing. So anyway, that's my two cents here. I surf a lot, and I, there's, you know, it's sad that you see all these people, and you wonder, where do they go to the bathroom? You know? And they go somewhere, okay? Let me tell you. And the people that can't go in the woods are the women, the children, and older people. We guys have it kind of easy. So, but I'm telling you, it's a hazard the way it is without a bathroom, and I really like the idea of moving it down like to the most southern, southwestern corner there, back from the trail, and then giving those RV spots back up to that place up there. That would be more visible from the road, too, for the night. Thanks.
Great. Thanks very much. You didn't mention the option of warming yourself up once you're in the water with the wet suit, but I'm passing that. I don't have any additional speaker cards, so not seeing anybody jumping up, we'll close the public comment period and turn it back over to Steph. Jill.
Thank you, Vice Chair Holt. Steph, I'd like to clarify a few things and try to respond to some of the community input, and we appreciate it very much and understand a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that we've heard. I was not very clear when you asked me the question about maintenance, and John Doughty reminded me specifically, the city is not going to be maintaining this bathroom. My confusion is that, I don't know if the Harbor District's going to do it or the RV park. That's part of their, they have to work that out. So the city is not on the hook for doing that. The reason why we're looking for making this improvement is multifold, and the funding question is actually one that City Council gave us direction for. Steph brought a report to them some time back, and they said, yes, go ahead and seek funding as, in collaboration with the Harbor District, to see if we can get some improvements on this site. There are a number of grants that can do that. We very much appreciate that there's already a structure there and that it's, it's sort of visually accepted at this point. It's almost invisible because it is, it is bunkered down really low. It's behind a tree. That said, if we were going to plan this site anew, and we were going to put a public restroom for coastal trailer users, we would not have put it there. It's not a good location. It's been a real challenge. Things have been going on in those bathrooms that the operator can't control, which is why they've blocked it from time to time. They really have a lot of trouble with keeping it, keeping it safe, and there's really no eyes on it. It doesn't conform to what we would call crime prevention through environmental design standards in terms of having eyes on the street. We like to have public spaces within public view, and that site struggles from that because of the RVs that are in between the bathroom and the trail. It's not, it's not something that can't be completely overcome, but that said, the site grades are also really challenging, and ADA requirements have only become stricter, and we would really like to see something that is absolutely top drawer, ADA accessible, especially in that this coastal trail span is so well-used and highly regarded, and we're trying to have a more accessible community. This is a priority of the city. So those, those are some of the things. And why, why you didn't see a location tonight in the parking area was that we're still really trying to engage with Coastal Commission, because coastal access, there's a lot of different ways that it's provided. One of them is with those public parking places, and as we started the dialogue, they were concerned about losing, losing those parking places, as were we. As there's, as we're all teasing out the challenges of where we might want to make an improvement like this. Brittany, can you go to where the actual sites there? I, I heard a number of people make comments about a location north of, northwest of Site Four, and we would agree, there's, there's probably some room in there along that edge, either in the public parking area or in the RV parking area that would be quite low down from the highway at a very similar grade to the coastal trail would provide for what we might call a forecourt between the trail and the restroom itself for the kinds of things that, you know, a stroller or a bike needing to get parked while somebody's hopping off and using the facility. So we held back from that because we were concerned about parking, but if there's other sites that you prefer, and it's coming out of our community dialogue, the Coastal Commission staff wants to hear about that. So please don't limit your input and direction to us to the three yellow circles or, or the red circle. We, we still, we have some direction from Council to look into this and to look for this kind of upgrade, and pulling it farther away would definitely extend the life of the kinds, kind of structure that could be put in.
Just one question, Jill. We heard a number of comments referencing potentially removing a couple RV lots and doing something along those lines. What latitude, if any, do we have to discuss that?
I think you have latitude there. It would affect the lease agreement that the Harbor District has with the RV operator, but we want to do good public space planning, so give us that input.
Okay. Turn it back over to the Commission. Commissioner Benjamin.
Sure. So thank you for the report, Brittany, and I'd like to thank the public. You know, we, we value our public input, but for tonight, we got some especially insightful comments, so well said, and thank you again, all of you. I'd like to start by addressing Mr. Olem's questions or comments. My understanding is that there is a, an after-the-fact CDP that's on deck at some point in the future, and that's in front of the Planning Commission in some point in the future, because we're the agency that grants coastal development permits now, and since he doesn't have one for this project, and the development has occurred, an after-the-fact coastal development permit is occurring. I don't know when that's going to happen, but in the meantime, you know, whoever and however this, this project is paid for is not the subject of tonight's hearing for me. My concern is a good, is a good public process, and the wisdom of the public being incorporated into the decision. The details of what the coastal development permit will require is for another day. That's not to say it's not important, it's just for another day, in my, my way of thinking. I appreciated also the comments of Ms. Ketchum. Thank you. It's great to see you tonight. I thought that knowing that there is additional water and sewer, or potentially water and sewer, leaves me thinking a little bit about a couple of different moves to make this, to maximize the result, especially with the combination of the public insight about having a consideration of a site a little bit to the north and the west of the circle marked four, in those parking spaces that are just below the arrow that points to Parking Space Four. And the combination thinking I have here starts with wondering what the, for those of us that don't know that area well, in the U-shaped traffic pattern in that area, at the sort of apex of the U, the, where it curls around and changes direction, is that landscaping, or are those buildings in that little sort of green and brown area?
Right next to the door.
Beyond the, yes, right where, yes, that area. So, so that's not to say that I don't love landscaping. Ask anybody. But it occurs to me that if we needed to get some more uses to manage the coastal access impacts of project changes, one possibility would be to reuse that area, to repurpose it in some way, so that if the existing restroom were, if that space could be repurposed for RV sites, we might end up being neutral with respect to the changes in that area. But again, that's sort of in the, with respect to the uses that are internal to the RV lot. Which brings me to the next comment. Based on the, the public input, I heard a lot of focus tonight on achieving a good result for the visitors beyond just the people who are in the RV. for the visitors beyond just the people who are in the RV park. I didn't hear anyone say, hey, we want to compete with the people who are in the RV park for a restroom. I didn't hear anybody say that that was a good idea. And it strikes me that if we can find a great site within this parcel that minimizes the conflicts with trail users and reduces coastal hazard issues and can still allow the space to be manipulated internally so that the value of the land as a parking place for RVs is maintained, I'm not concerned about how it gets paid for, but just how it gets maintained. That strikes me as a valuable idea. So my thinking is that perhaps a bathroom site that is in those parking spaces underneath the arrow that points to four might be a worthwhile place. If we need to recreate, yes, thank you, where the green dot is, that area, and if we need to create more parking in order to achieve the coastal access and the ADA provisions of, you know, that we're committed to as a steward of this land, perhaps we could reclaim them from the bathroom location where it is now, and that bathroom location, since it would no longer be tasked with serving the public beyond the RV folks, maybe it could be in that landscaped area at the apex of the U that we looked at previously. Now, I acknowledge that that may or may not be a great location from a point of view of design for crime prevention, as Jill had mentioned in passing, but it strikes me as a sort of a starting point for thinking about it. I'm interested in what your thoughts are, those are just a few places to get started. Thanks.
Before you move on, did you have any thoughts on the design alternatives?
Yeah, I was going to shut up, but, you know, I've never really felt like a port-a-let was the greatest place to use the bathroom. It's not that they are not valuable, but, you know, I prefer a structure that can facilitate showers and features like that. And I will just mention in passing what Mr. Pond mentioned in his comments, which was that we do have a lot of users of this beach on the other side, and while it's not the subject of tonight's hearing, so it's not something that we can just add as a, hey, Steph, go do this while you're thinking about it, it certainly would be nice to have a facility on the east side to accommodate the needs of those folks who are on the east side. But I would be inclined towards the heavier structures. I don't, if I had to choose between a bathroom that maintained its waste in a vault and had to be pumped to the sewer line, as opposed to a bathroom that had a lateral that went directly to the sewer line, if, you know, from a point of view of reliability, I would prefer the lateral to the line. But I'm not, you know, you've asked me for feedback on placement and type of design, so I may be getting into the weeds to go much beyond that. But does that answer your questions?
It does.
And PV is great.
We're addressing both sides.
Yeah, PV would be really hard with a port-a-let.
Okay. Commissioner Damon.
My issue with going further north as a biker, like I biked down there this afternoon, glad I didn't get rained on, but the issue is driving into that parking lot and even walking into the parking lot from a both safety and ADA standpoint, I don't think that's a good idea. So therefore, having something inside where you have vehicles, to me, is not optimal. At least, that's my view on that. Obviously, we have choices over here. The problem with three is, if I'm a biker coming down, there's a hill there, I see often people walking across there to the other path, as you can see, the breakwater that goes along two, west of Number Two, and I've often almost hit people there. So having a structure at Number Three would block views of bikers coming down, so I have an issue with Number Three. Number Four, you're actually coming down a hill. If you go further south, there's a hill that's going down, and where Four is, is kind of the apex of where that curve turns. In theory, to me, you can put a structure there that's almost below grade, so that from views from Highway One, I think you'd have a, not as large of a visual issue. But the other problem I have is wherever you put this, I think you need sufficient room for showers. I think you need at least one or more showers. And I think if you had people congregate on the trail, I think that would be an issue for walkers and bikers. So I think you need enough area or have the opening of the restroom such that people wouldn't congregate on the trail. Now, whether that involves taking over one parking space or not, I'm not sure. So again, from a user of the trail, you know, if these are the options we have, my option would be to kind of work with Number Four, maybe even push it into the parking lot, because that, it provides the least blocking of the view, and I think it's also an optimum point if you can do it large enough that people can congregate there without blocking the trail. And as far as the type of structure, you know, concrete masonry would be my view. If, you know, if we're worried about sea level rise, then we don't have a trail in any case, and therefore, we don't need a restroom. So, I mean, the issue with me is to go with the most solid type of construction as you can get. Those are my views.
Great. Commissioner Evans?
At first look, Number Four seems the right location, but I'm not saying I'm recommending that. There's not nearly, well, for me, there's not nearly enough information here to make any kind of recommendation. Haven't really seen a topo map, it can be really deceiving, grade changes and what's possible of where to put buildings. I agree that building a permanent facility is the most practical thing to do. Porta-potties are not, but there's also ways to do these permanent buildings where the building itself doesn't have to be like, you know, an Egyptian pyramid made out of blocks. There's other ways to do that, and we're not to the point yet where I think we're even seeing practical, good alternatives for the look and the shape of these buildings. I think there's also a lot that could be done, if I'm not thinking about budget and who owns what and who pays for what, in and around that, where Site Number Four is, pushing it towards the arrow that's pointing to Number Four, there could be a lot done there with the site with grade changes where it's not necessarily accessible from the trail, but the trail can be there and it could be accessible, talking about ADA accessibility from the parking area and from the trail, you just have to walk around a little. I think everything that people have been saying about that there's going to be congregations around this little bathroom, probably everybody would like a little Starbucks there, it'd be great, you know? So we really, I imagine one of the things you're asking is for us to do the scope of work so that some sort of RFP can be done for this kind of project, so that really work through the design issues that are here. It's hard to imagine that we can get better bathrooms and keep parking places and/or keep the RV places. I don't see how you could do that. So something's got to give there, and I'm not sure who, how that discussion happens. And reading through the staff report, it wasn't clear to me that the bathrooms there are not functional at all. I can understand that they're not accessible. So that's also, it needs to be studied more carefully in the preliminary design phase of a project like this. And I'm assuming that if this is a public facility mainly and not necessarily, well, it's hard to understand how you mix a public bathroom that's next to the beach and a bathroom that services an RV park, that's really more a private kind of thing. To me, that, programmatically, that seems like there ought to be two, where you drive in there and the people that are kind of living in the RV park have their space and they kind of take care of it, and they've got their dogs and their kids and whatever's there. I think it's kind of permanent housing for every construction worker that lives here is that RV park right now. So the public restroom, and so that kind of speaks to me that from a scope, there would be two buildings. And whatever the costs are and who pays for them and all of that is a kind of a different subject matter. It is an opportunity to upgrade how it all looks there, and it's a great opportunity to also introduce even more creative kind of solutions to public bathrooms. Right now, I think we're pretty limited on what we are asked to use, and there's other places around the world that do a much better job than we do with this kind of stuff, so that's my feedback on that.
Any additional comments, or?
You haven't had a shot yet.
No, I haven't yet. So, yeah, I would, I appreciate this coming forward, and I'm glad that we're considering this, just, there's a number of different government agencies involved here and the lease owner, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to try to, you know, push forward sort of a broader vision there. Thank you, Jill. And of course, we're talking about a bathroom, but from my plan or mine, I would love to see, you know, a broader site plan. And I think, you know, looking at, what would be important to me is pulling the bathroom off of the trail so that users aren't congregating on the trail, sightlines along the trail, and then regardless of who's paying for maintenance, that whatever building that we have is designed with, you know, good public use, maintenance considerations in there. So I would lean towards one of the masonry buildings or something like that. I think it's important, you know, whether in terms of branding, but just sort of consistency with some of the other public facilities up and down the coastal trail, not all of them being nice, so we don't necessarily want to match those ones, but the new restrooms at Marotta and others, I think it's important to have a consistent theme. Certainly, the public doesn't know if they're in a state park or city trail or Harbor District property, so having that sort of consistent theme, I think, is good. I would, you know, I'm sort of split between Site Two and Four. I think, you know, Four, utilizing that broader parking area, I think you're gonna, you are going to have people congregating, you might, you know, the showers, other facilities, other things there. I think, you know, it would be great if we could talk about some reconfiguration of some of the RV lots and some of that sort of area and what would work for the broader site. So whether or not we can get there or not, but like I said, for me, what's important is the safety of the users on the trail and being able to get off, and then still preserving the view shed and the aesthetics of the site and making sure that it's an appropriate facility for a site that's as busy and popular as that is. Go for it.
So, not meaning to act like a chair, but, you know, I heard remarkable consistency across our thinking about this. I'm not sure I heard much daylight at all. I don't know if staff did, if there's any clarification that we need to give you beyond what you heard. It sounded to me like there's a lot of interest in whether we can make something good happen slightly north and west of Site Four, that nobody really wants it on top of the trail because of the potential bike people interaction, the possibility of foregoing the intrusion of waves and other inconvenient things. That, I also heard a lot of people talking about the site plan, and of course, that's not what you asked us for feedback on exactly tonight, but in between the lines, I hope that when the coastal development permit, the after-the-fact coastal development permit comes along, there'll be a chance for us to incorporate our ideas about that, so we get a bite at that apple, at least one. And, you know, the idea that we could brand this in a way that provides an identity that's separate from the accommodations of the people who are staying in the RV park, which, my understanding is that the use is supposed to be visitor-serving and not a de facto neighborhood. That's something that we probably want to understand better at some, in some other process, but there is something there. I heard you, John. But the idea that they'd be separate rather than expecting one bathroom to do both of those jobs from a public perspective, sounds like something everybody was sort of on board with tonight. And I also think that we kind of, I think the public was, this is one of the rare moments where we actually may have agreement with the public on almost everything. So I'm hopeful that we got what we were, what we've given what we were looking for, and don't know if there's anything else that, you know, if I've misstated what I heard, I just got to make mental notes while everybody talked, but that was what I got.
I would share that impression. I would also restate Commissioner Evans' statement that I still don't feel that there's necessarily enough information here, so, but understanding that that information will be coming forward, so. So with that, I, you know, there's no specific action you need from us, correct?
Thank you very much. That absolutely got us started, and we can move forward, and we look forward to bringing this to you again. Thanks.
Okay, very good. We can move on to the next item, Item 1B, Coastal Development Permit Architectural Review and Sign Permit for Highway One, South Main Street Gateway Sinage and Landscaping Project. Thank you, everybody, for coming and your comments.
I'll have to get them better to get out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. This item before you is coming back. This is something that you saw back in September in a study session with the Hafman Bay, oh, wait a minute, why are we on this? I'm going to start at the beginning here. There we go. The Highway One South Gateway Landscaping and Sinage Project. This is a component of the Highway One Signalization Project at South Main Street and Higgins Canyon Road, which is a project that the Planning Commission issued a coastal development permit for in November 2017. Part of that review included conditions of approval and an understanding that detailed landscaping plans and signage components to support wayfinding and further reinforce the safety improvements for pedestrians and bicycles, which are inherently the, one of the priorities of this project, would be incorporated together. You saw a concept for signage and landscaping at a study session in September, and the Commission gave feedback to our landscape architect as well as staff regarding wayfinding elements and their visibility, the height, and specific orientation of the signage, the size of the copy, the visibility of that copy, the copy being the lettering on the signage, lighting of the sign, in particular, taking great care for our desire for dark night skies while also recognizing this is a Caltranslit intersection, and we also have an aesthetic that we're trying to accomplish with the signage, and then more details on the landscape planting plan. Before moving forward with those design details, a city engineer, Maziar Borzergimia, and I took this to City Council in October just to confirm that they were comfortable. This is a highly visible project. It's an important project for the city. It's been having a gateway at this. It's been, having a gateway at this intersection is, is something that the city's been planning for, for a number of years in different configurations. So moving forward with that, we wanted to ensure that council was, was on board, and they said yes. And to conclude with the Planning Commission, by moving forward and addressing the comments that you had and coming back to you for a coastal development permit. Now, I do want to make a couple notes about the Halfman Bay, the gateway sculpture that is located there now in the corner. We have acknowledged in your study session staff report back in September, also for council and again tonight, that the sculpture could remain with this project or it could also be phased out over time. And we didn't get any input with regards to the visibility of the sculpture. We would assume that if you had really wanted it to be featured as part of the gateway, that we would, we would have received direction to change some of the trees, because frankly, the, the trees will block the view of it from, from quite a few angles. Council specifically said, we're ready to, to phase that out, and it, it doesn't mean we're trying to eliminate the sculpture from the face of Halfman Bay. It's something now where Steph's wondering, well, where should it go and what's the best kind of space where it should be located? We did receive some input about that in advance of your meeting tonight, and maybe we'll get some public comment on it, which would be, which would be great. What we noted as staff with that sculpture is it, it's really, the scale of it relative to the massive scale of the intersection is really challenging. It's, it's sort of sitting in a void. It's hard to appreciate the detail of the sculpture. It's made of some very beautiful limestone materials, and unless you actually walk right up to it and, and get quite close, it's, it's hard to appreciate that. So we could imagine it being reset in, in a smaller space, and we would normally take something like that through our Parks and Recreation Commission, so that, that would be our intent as, as we would move forward to potential relocation. So I just wanted people to know what is going to happen to that and where we are. So in a minute, we'll have our landscape architect give you a refresh presentation. He's going to focus on the design development since September, but I'm going to finish the staff part of the presentation now so that it isn't quite so interrupted. First of all, reminding you what is before you. This is not a study session. This is going to be a public hearing. You have a coastal development permit, architectural review, a sign permit, and we have presented to you a CEQA exemption for this project. Your staff report, as well as the findings included in Exhibit B to the resolution, present the analysis and evidence with respect to consistency with the local coastal program, both the land use plan policies as well as the zoning code, all, all through the major categories of coastal access, coastal recreation, environmentally sensitive habitat areas, visual resources, hazards, and in this case, we really aren't talking about coastal hazards so much as sightlines and safety of, of this intersection, and the design review criteria that is part of your, your zoning code. Staff is recommending approval, and the recommendation is presented for you at the beginning of the staff report. We note that should this go forward, next steps, and Maziar can, I give more information about the process of getting through a Caltrans review process, and this, this is part of that project, and then moving into implementation. After Tom Conroy with Kikuchi makes a presentation, we'll have time for Planning Commission clarifying questions and a public hearing, and then your deliberation. And with that, we'll go ahead and move over to that presentation.
Hello, again. Nice to see you all again. I think we're on. Have to bend down. Haven't updated these microphones in years, huh? I was here, as Jill said, back in September, and neither Commissioner Holt nor Commissioner Benjamin were here at the time. I trust you've had the opportunity to familiarize yourself with the project. I don't want to re-review our original concepts for this, but I'd like, as Jill said, to focus on, on moving forward. But I do want to restate our goals, because I think they're important, and we kept these goals in mind as we moved through our design development. The first goal was, was, was functional, to create a real sense of entry into town. Right now, there's no formal demarcation of the southern limits of the city. We've all heard anecdotes about people driving through Halfman Bay and saying, well, I didn't even know there was a downtown. And I'm sure our Chamber of Commerce echoes a lot of those comments. And so our hope is that this gateway experience will provide a sense of entry, an arrival sequence, helping visitors recognize the southern limits of the downtown area and to reinforce a sense of welcoming into our community. The second goal was, was, relates to the history. As, as the commission all know, Main Street was the original alignment of Highway One, and our downtown contains dozens of historic buildings. And, and this all kind of reflects the, that historical alignment. And we think it's important to maintain some aspect of that in the new gateway design, even if the realities of Caltrans and traffic safety requirements don't allow us to maintain the actual physical alignment. And finally, our third goal was the aesthetics, which was, which really concerned the visual connection of these improvements to town and to the site overall. And it was important to us that the southern gateway feel like it fits the entire town, not one specific aspect of it. Halfman Bay is not just a beach town. It is not a old historical town. It's not just an agricultural community, and it's definitely not just a pumpkin town. So it was critical that the design language that we use convey a broader sense of place and not focus on one specific component of the hodgepodge of influences that have shaped Halfman Bay. And that leads us to the refined landscape and site plan that we have in front of you. Our work towards these goals has really been helped along by city staff, by our consultants who have, who are in charge of the, processing the Caltrans alignment. Planning Commission input, city council input have all brought us to this point. Broadly speaking, the site plan looks pretty similar to the conceptual plan that we reviewed together back in September. The sense of entry really comes from a series of elements that bracket the newly realigned intersection and transition down in three levels to scale along the new walkways. And the first level, there it is. The first level are these lines of New Zealand Christmas trees. These are the existing street trees along Main Street on the west side. These are the ones on the east side. These trees wrap around the limits of the intersection, and these trees continue down across this, you can see this bold line is the limits of the adjacent properties. It's really this line here and the sightlines from Highway One looking up to Main Street that help us hit that history goal, help maintain that original alignment as a visual amenity, if not a literal driving service. The second level of the sense of entry, or these brackets, are the gentle birmingham and landscape plantings that occur in this area and in this area over here. These plants and the landforms rise from the limits of the property, and they, they rise up to meet these, this third level, oops, sorry, sorry, sorry. There we go. They rise up to meet this third level of bracketing, which are the two crescent-shaped monument signs. Each one is about nine feet tall by 50 feet wide, and these provide both gateway entry and wayfinding functions. Surrounding these walls on both sides of the intersection, and, and also really stretching down the medians too, to the limits of, of the current medians, are large masses of mostly native flowering shrubs and grasses. And these plantings are really the connective tissue that allows the gateway to connect to its site, both by functioning as an entry and an exit. Close to the sign walls, these plantings are slightly more detailed. They're maybe more refined, the masses are slightly smaller, but as you travel away from the intersection, the masses get larger, and they fade into the grasslands of Wavecrest over here and to the agrifield, agricultural fields and coastal chaparral to the east. From three points, this one here, this one here, and over here, we developed photo simulations of what this area can look like. This is from the new turning lane on northbound Highway One. You can see the, the alignment is now much more formal. Crosswalks occur at all three sides of the intersection, and you can really pick up here how this graduated transition goes from the distant hills to the street trees, down to the sign walls and the pedestrian scale at the sidewalk here. One thing at our study session in September that Commissioner Hernandez brought up was some concerns that vehicles that are waiting here at the stoplight, waiting to turn, may block visibility of the sign. And I just wanted to point out that crosswalks weren't in our earlier photo simulations, that here's the crosswalk, beyond that, there's actually a 10-foot green painted bike turning lane, and so a vehicle stopped will not really extend much past this point right here, making the visibility of the sign pretty clear at all times. Our second photo simulation, this is from standing on the shoulder or maybe on the trail that runs alongside of Wavecrest, looking east of Higgins Canyon Road. You can see the gentle curves of the walls really kind of evoke the hills beyond. You can pick up some of the additional terracing, visual terracing from the mountains to the trees down to the pedestrian level. This northern sign here is the, is the welcoming, the gateway sign of Halfman Bay written across. This is the southern sign, which really focuses southbound visitors towards the south end of Main Street and the historic downtown area. And I'll, I'll give you some more detail on the, on the walls in a second. Our third photo simulation, this is from the new left-hand turning lane looking south, and this one here, you can see how the southern sign really picks up on some of these broad, rounded features beyond it, especially when, in autumn, when these hills are in their golden color, it really, you can really see that again in the, in the signs themselves. This was the plan that we presented back in September, and I just put it up so that I can illustrate the, how we incorporated both city council and planning commission feedback. So if we gray everything out, in the background, you can see in red, this is the new geometry. Main changes were the sidewalk got wider. The sidewalk's now 10 feet wide to accommodate more people, especially bike traffic as it continues up Higgins Canyon Road and along a future trail connection along the side of the road. We wanted to be able to accommodate people coming from Higgins down across the Wavecrest and out to the coastal trail. The second change was the planning commission had some concern with the location of the southern wall as well as its orientation, and we did a couple of things in order to address those issues. Here in purple was where we had the old sign in September. We moved that sign a little more than 12 feet back to the north and the east. That changes the orientation from the southbound direction and makes it less of a visual block to the agricultural fields beyond, and helps turn your eye towards the, towards the northbound direction, away from Higgins, but more towards South Main Street. There were also some landform changes that, that we, we went through on this iteration. Some of the birmingham was refined for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to get as much of the birmingham as possible out of Caltrans right of way, away from the existing drainage ditch along Highway One. Over here, we softened the birmingham a little bit, because when we pushed the wall forward, we ran into some potential danger about losing that visual connection to South Main Street out to Highway One. And so we softened the birmingham, we lowered the birmingham, and made it a little bit more gradual from this edge up to the, to the back of the wall. This area here that's striped, this is the expanded bio-retention area. That has waxed and waned a little bit as we've gone through the design development, and with this new alignment, we were able to maximize that. And ultimately, having an expanded biofiltration area is, is critical, because this is helping slow and treat the water that ultimately ends up through Wavecrest and into the Seymour Ditch and out into the ocean. So heading back to our site plan here, I want to focus now on the sign walls, the northern one and the southern one. Just as a reminder, this is, this is the real inspiration that we took, these, the colors and the color gradations of the cliffs, as well as the texture and the, the shapes and shadows of the hills that surround our town. This is our northern sign wall. This is really the gateway. This is the welcome to Halfman Bay sign. You can see our original concept up here from September. This is how it fits in the model now with plantings. We've enlarged the sign type. What you see here is a 21-inch tall letter. 21-inch tall letter can be read at highway speeds from 345 feet away, which puts you two-thirds of the way down to Cameron's, just for, for context. As a gateway feature, that's, that's pretty important. This is Halfman Bay. We want people to be able to read this as they're, they're coming up to the intersection. The other thing you'll see here is it's difficult to model the, the texture of these walls accurately, and so you can see these lines that come through the sign here. Those are really different gradations, different levels of intensity of concrete color. We're trying to mimic the, that gradation of the, the cliffs in that previous image, and by using darker, heavier textures at the bottom and working lighter as we get to the top, we, we hope to be able to achieve a similar aesthetic. Bridget, behind you are the letters. Oh, you're right there. So we have a few samples. The H is for the sideways sign. The, the B represents the, the font size on the southern sign, which I'm going to flip to in just a second. Those are plastic, but what we anticipate using is brass. But with, ultimately, it'll, it'll patina out to a dark bronze color like that. Here's the southern sign. You see, the, in the concept, it was our historic downtown. As we put it into the model and began detailing it, the text size got bigger, it shifted slightly to the left of the sign, which allowed us to make a slightly larger area for changeable event signage. This is something that the city would have ultimate authority over, but this may be your pumpkin festival sign, your night of lights. The city may have arrangements with nonprofits, so, you know, the Pumpkin Run, senior co-signors may have a Pumpkin Run sign, high school events, things like that, that, that we can have that refreshed from time to time. A 15-inch text size, which is the same size as the B that was circulating around, can be read at highway speeds from 240 feet away, which is just beyond the limits of where the new turn lane starts headed southbound. of where the new turn lane starts headed southbound. The last element that I want to talk about is the light and how we're going to light this because that was a concern to the commission when we talked in September, as well as to the council when we talked to them in October. It's difficult to pick up in some of the photosimulations because the colors kind of blend together. But this cutaway section shows the general structural, general shape of the wall. And what's, what we added in this iteration is this little, this space with the curb, which is where we're going to embed LED light strips that shine directly back on the wall. And if you can see here, this is, you can see the yellow area here is really the limits of the light spread from those LED strips. There'll be three strips, and I have a sample here that we can go ahead and plug in. The goal is that each one of these strips will be independently dimmed. And so we will have finite control over the output of the three different colors. One is a sixty-five-hundred Kelvin, which is a brighter daylight white. The middle one is a three-thousand Kelvin, which is kind of the warm white, and the red. And the red, well, all three of them in combination provide a really nice, warm, uniform glow from the bottom of the sign up to the top without spilling over the limits of the sign. We don't, with this sample, we don't have the capacity to show you all the dimming features. We could be here for hours longer if we wanted to. But in working with staff and in continuing our progress on construction drawings that are working with the Caltrans mittel, we will, we will be dialing this down to get both the combination of colors as well as the, as well as trying to control the light spread to make sure that the sign gets lit, but nothing else does. And that is the extent of our update. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff or the architect?
Just one, oh, I'm sorry, John. Just one. Coolest presentation ever. About the New Zealand trees, in your photosimulation, they were pretty low, below the hills. Were those the heights that you expect them to stabilize at? Or were that, you know, how much higher did they go?
If you're familiar with the trees on the south end of Main Street right now, I don't anticipate them getting much bigger than that. I think if you see one that's beyond thirty feet, that's a huge tree in this environment. I think you'll probably see most of them mature up at twenty-four or twenty-six feet or so.
And the assemblage of plants, one of the things I visualize us doing, I'm wondering whether this was part of your design, was that we, you know, plants are living things, which means they're also dying things. And it's nice if they don't all die at the same time. When we, when we're trying to plan for a succession of maintenance of the vegetation at the gateway, is, are the vegetation pallets going to facilitate, you know, a gradual intermittent kind of replacement of dying vegetation?
Well, there's a lot that goes into success of vegetation, maintenance being a critical component. Because these are mostly ornamental grasses that will continue to refresh themselves, there shouldn't be any issues. If you go out there, a lot of these may be able to be broadly mown in the winter to refresh and fill in. They're established native plants that shouldn't need really to be yanked out and wholesale replanted.
So the annuals will thrive on neglect?
They're all perennial native plants, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
I'd like to apologize to Tom. I broke the number-one showbiz rule of stepping on your lines there. I didn't mean to do that and interfere with your presentation. Couple of questions for the staff. Can you talk me, well, first of all, I'm assuming you collaborate with Kikuchi on the conditions that are in our report so that as we're ruling on that, that you worked with them on those conditions and they didn't have feedback in a negative way or something?
So this is the city's permit. So we were really the ones who are going to have to comply with them. And what we did with these conditions was acknowledged the previously implied conditions, conditions that were imposed for the signalization project as a whole and as kind of the base because this is all part of that same project. And then we did add conditions about field verification of things like the lighting that you heard tonight. And we did discuss that as well as confirming sightlines. So yeah, this has been collaborative and we're all on the same page.
Now, can you talk me through, eventually there'll be street lighting here from like signals and lights for the intersection. Talk me through how the decisions of that process happen. Eventually, there's these light fixtures that are out on the roadway. And so somehow, there's a process of making decisions. So how does that happen and who makes those decisions?
For the, for the safety lighting in the intersection, that's unfortunately, that's a Caltrans standard. So essentially, Caltrans will require us to provide photometric, photometric study of the location. And they will require us to adjust it accordingly. But they have certain safety standard lighting requirements that are part of the state that we would have to meet as far as the intersection lighting itself.
I understand that, but there also are fixtures. And in different towns and different intersections, I see different styles of fixtures. How does that work? How are those decisions made?
That is, the particular fixtures that we're talking about here would be the safety lighting that's actually on the traffic signal poles themselves. So there would be an extension of that. As far as the fixture, if we're looking at doing a different type of streetlights, that would be subject to review by Caltrans for different pieces. But ultimately, it would be a requirement for the city to maintain. So we would have a little more leeway there. But for the safety lighting, essentially, they sit on top of the traffic signal itself. And so there isn't a separate fixture for the safety lighting.
When I'm looking at the rendering of looking south. Yeah. So when you say safety lighting, what's the pole that's sticking up to the left of the traffic signals that hang out over the street?
It's actually an extension on the top of the pole.
Right, so that's what you're talking about?
Correct.
So I've seen different looking fixtures that do those things. Who makes those decisions? Are there, I mean, how's that happen?
We can make some recommendations. Ultimately, it is subject to the Caltrans approval. But we do have some leeway in those. Although there aren't too many different types that would be, that you could attach to a traffic signal pole. But certainly, we can look at the different options that are available.
So there could be some point where there's choice ABC or choice one of, whatever they are. Somewhere in this process, the city might have a little bit to say about, or?
You know, I want to step in to make sure that it's clear that those traffic signals are block models. We didn't model the specific traffic signal or light. So I don't want you to take that as gospel.
No, I understand. I'm just wondering, everybody always says, well, that's Caltrans does it. Well, somebody decides what it looks like. And there are choices. So I'm just one, you know, at some point, do we go, well, we don't like it, but we're stuck because you say we have to have it? Is there a process in that decision-making? And where does that happen?
I think the, I think the process and decision-making really is tied more to the maintenance and ongoing efforts. For example, if we request Caltrans to maintain traffic signals, they're going to want to keep their standard, which is the standard Cobra Head lighting that you would see in any other Caltrans intersection. If we were to implement something different or a variation, then it may come back to us as being a requirement for maintenance.
I hate to be redundant, but they must have more than one choice that they make. Because I see in different cities, different looking fixtures.
We can definitely look into it. Yeah, certainly.
And then just for the record, I occasionally do do work with Kikuchi's office. In the time span of this, we have not. But just to point out, because we are taking an action tonight, I have no conflict with this project, with my professional relationships.
Thank you for that. Commissioner DeMong?
Tom, I want to thank you. I think the word cool is a good adjective. As far as this change, I think you've taken what we've said before. Really not sure what the City Council had you do. But from what I remember back in September, I think almost all the recommended changes we made are incorporated here. And certainly, I hope everything goes forward. And I think at least from the pictures here, I like what I see. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
I don't have any additional questions, so we'll open up the public hearing. And I do have one card here. And I apologize if I get your name wrong. But I'll just go with the first name, Johanna. Please come to the mic. And if there are any other public speakers, just a reminder, grab a green card and please submit.
Hi, I'm Johanna, good grief, I'm Johanna Tesaro. And I am a resident of Half Moon Bay. I also have a degree in design and studio art. And I am here in a roundabout way because I was concerned about what was going to happen to the little moon at the corner sculpture. And I didn't really know. I went into the downtown city hall and asked them about that because I was concerned it was going to get shuffled away somewhere. And I came out of there with the plan. And what struck me about the plan is that the monuments, I think, could be anywhere. They could be in Livermore or in Torrance. I, as an artist, I don't see that they relate in any way, with all due respect to whoever designed them, to what Half Moon Bay is really about. And so I just wanted to give input about how, you know, there's surfers here, there's fishermen, there's farmers, there's farmworkers, there's cattle and whales and, you know, boats and pumpkins and hawks and seabirds. And nothing in those signs says anything about our town to me. And I've talked to some other artists who were not able to come tonight and they were going to try and email. But we're a rich visual area. And to me, that is, I understand the concept of the color and the textures and all that. But, you know, those cliffs are not what I think about when I think about Half Moon Bay. So I just wanted to say that the person that I talked to, I forget his name, I'm sorry. But he said, well, you know what you don't want. What do you want? And he said, do you want painting on there? And I said, well, not, that looks like something that could be sculpted out maybe with some images that one could say have to do more with our town. And we could incorporate something like sea glass into there, maybe. That's something that's like the beautiful things that we find by the ocean. Who knows, shells? I don't know. But I don't know. I think something more lovely and beautiful could be the entrance to our town than something that is a semi-dramatic shape, which doesn't really speak to me. And one more thing. There is an element on this design, which I don't know, it's this part right here that sticks out farther than the, yes. You can go to the one where we're looking, we're looking to the east, if you want. Next one. One more, that one. That green that's right there. I think that is going to be somehow visually impairing to people trying to make a U-turn or what if there's some small little whatever there? I don't know. That kind of seems to be in the way to me and interfering maybe with some kind of traffic things. But that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the only speaker's card that I have for this item. Not seeing anybody else jump out. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any comments from the commission?
I'd like to compliment Steve and Tom. It's fabulous job. You were given a particular set of rules that were awkward to say the best for it. And I'm in disagreement with the comments I've heard about that it's not representative of the coast. What's, for me, most representative of the coast from a design point of view with the things we build are things that complement the natural environment we already have. And anything that would be like a sign or billboard or other sculptural interpretation really wouldn't transition very well because we're just talking about going from a highway, steering ourselves into the town. I think you've done a fabulous job with that. Presentation's very professional and thank you very much for that. The lighting is exactly what we were talking about before. And look forward to my iPhone. I can move those as I drive up. I can change the lighting, right? But it's just great. And I think that all the improvements you've done with the minor adjustments to the sign orientations as well as the sidewalk widths are just great. And the city, I think, is, to be shamelessly promotional, very lucky that they hired a local firm that did this work and they're doing a very professional job. And I really appreciate it. Especially the ground, the use of the runoff coming off the farms there and putting in a swale and groundwater retention for that is great. And that's really a problematic corner for drainage there. You're doing a great job with that. Thank you very much. So I support the project.
Got that. Commissioner DeMong, any additional comments?
I have none and I also support going forward with the project.
Commissioner Benjamin?
You know, I served two terms on the Planning Commission in the nineties and this term. And I think for the first time in all the time I've been here, this is the first time I felt like the architecture and site and design role was really easy and meaningful. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate the comments of the speaker. I do understand that there are notions of Half Moon Bay that are not represented in this particular design. I don't think that that precludes us from including it in designs at other locations. One of the challenges, based on the review of the minutes from the discussion that I missed, which made me feel more comfortable participating tonight, was that we were, we were trying to address this from the point of view, as you implied in some of your presentation, of people who are entering town in automobiles at relatively high speeds from relatively high, large distances. So that suggests that the nuance that might be easy to appreciate at a pedestrian rate of speed and a pedestrian level would be easier to work with in some other locations. It may be that there are details that we may choose to add to this parcel at some point in the future. Because after all, towns are living and art is living. And it makes sense for us to allow our ideas to evolve organically. So I mean no disrespect or lack of interest in the point of view of the speaker when I say that I would like to see the opportunity for those ideas to be manifest possibly elsewhere, possibly here in the future. But I do like the ideas that I see in this design. There is a continuity. There's a continuity with landscapes that I saw on several occasions. And there is a consistency with the values that are the brand of California coastal beach towns that I also, while you didn't mention it explicitly, I feel it when I look at the pictures. And I value that as a brand as well. So thank you so much for your excellent work here and in your years on the Planning Commission. I also appreciate those very much. So thank you again. I'll be supporting this project.
I also wanted to respond to Jill's comments about the sculpture that's there now. And my personal opinion is it's a good time to look at transitioning that to some other location. And you're right, it works really well when you're close to it, and this is a great opportunity for that. I do support that.
Great. Yeah, most of my comments have been said. I would back up Commissioner Evans regarding the relocation of the moon. Won't use the other derisive terms for it. But I think it's a, yeah, nice design, and I agree, it doesn't detract from the natural environment around it. It's clean, and I appreciate the functional elements of the bioswales on the other end. So with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion and...
Move the resolution next in order.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that approved. Move on. Thank you very much. Tom and others? Our next item on the agenda, item 1C, the coastal development permit and use permit for Calvary Chapel Church. So let staff shuffle around a bit and... The beauty of art. Okay, Commissioner Evans returning. Thank you to everybody who's been here in standing room only for plugging through. So there are seats now, so please help yourself. And so with that, please, take it away. You need your microphone on.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Doug Garrison, the project planner. This item is similar to one that we dealt with about a month ago. It's a church project. It's taking an existing office building and converting, in this case, the first floor to a church use. It's located on Highway 1, just south of Half Moon Bay Joe's, the restaurant, kind of landmark there. So the basic background, it's a two-story office building. What would happen with this proposal is the first floor would become a church or a religious assembly use. Second floor will remain a commercial office with the existing tenant. In terms of the neighborhood, it's this office building, the one that's fronting onto Highway 1. This is Joe's, Half Moon Bay Joe's Restaurant. Behind there, there are 12 residential units. And then behind that, there's the hotel, the Half Moon Bay Lodge, and then additional residential over here to the south. And across the street, it's agricultural, mostly hoop houses. All of these uses in here have a shared access. Each use is on a separate lot, and each lot has its own parking. They're self-contained. It's not a question of shared parking like we had with the Mariners Church project, which had created some friction in the past. We've included, the building's staying the same, there are just some very minor changes. These existing doors, they'll be removed, along with the adjacent window to provide for a six-foot wide double opening door to facilitate egress because of the change in occupancy type. Normally, that's something we wouldn't really even subject to architectural review. It would just be a building permit with staff review. In this case, it does require coastal development permit. Under our definition of development, a change in use is development. So coastal development permit is required. Also, in this case, a use permit, in this PD zoning, PUD zoning, they don't list, especially the specific plan for this plan development, they don't really say that churches are permitted or not permitted, but in other zoning districts will require a use permit. So that's the standard we're using here. It's based on the precedent with the Mariners Church over in Stone Pine. But because there are some changes to the building, we have included architectural review in this because it's part of the project. Normally, it wouldn't be something this minor that would come to the commission. And this one is categorically exempt from CEQA. There's quite a bit of discussion on that in the findings in the resolution. A couple of points here. The applicant brought in, they would like to add a condition of approval. I believe all the commissioners have a copy of it. This would become A9. And what they've done is limited some of the activities that could be more noise-producing, like concerts, outdoor barbecues, that sort of thing. And that's based on some negotiations between the applicants and the neighbors, did not involve the city. And this is their solution to having worked out those issues. And at this point, staff supports adding the condition if that's what they want. Just procedurally, there is a mistake in the resolution and the conditions of approval. The title's wrong. We will correct that with the final resolution. So as far as sort of what happens when you go from an office to a church, we've looked at, it's not a comprehensive traffic study, but I did look up the Institute of Traffic Engineer, trip generation factors for an office and for a church. They're roughly comparable. If anything, the church actually would be fewer daily automobile trips. So I think it's safe to say that it's not really intensifying the use of the building. The hours of use may change. They shift a little bit more towards weekends than weekdays. If anything, it sort of smoothes out the traffic over seven days instead of concentrating in five days. So as far as neighborhood compatibility, it seemed like parking and noise were potential issues. We did the parking analysis. The advantage here is we have one owner and two tenants, so much of the parking is sorted out through the tenant leases. And in this case, there is adequate parking. The office space would have 24 spaces dedicated for their use. That leaves 31 for the church. The church in their application noted that their current membership is, they have maybe 50 to 75 people attending services. They would like to grow to perhaps double that, maybe 150. So with their existing dedicated spaces, based on zoning standards, they could accommodate, say, 140 people in the church. And so the parking does work with the 31 spaces they have. We have put a condition in that if all the parties involved, the two tenants and the owner, come to an agreement, they could do a higher occupancy by sharing the parking, say, on weekends when the office is closed. But it's subject to them working that out amongst themselves and then submitting some written proof to the city that everything's taken care of. We do have a condition, would have been A8, that limits outdoor activities to prevent noise. With the addition of nine, I think noise is really not an issue at this point. So in terms of making all the findings for the coastal development permit and the use permit, we reviewed it with consistency with our general plan, the local land use plan, zoning ordinance. It meets all of those requirements. As conditioned, we don't see neighborhood compatibility being an issue for parking and noise. So we're recommending approval of the coastal development permit and the use permit at this time with the additional condition added. The applicant is here. They may want to speak a little bit to their negotiations and how they kind of arrived at this solution. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Before we hear from the applicant, any clarifying questions from the commission?
Just one question, Doug. I think of traffic at a church as being sort of bursty compared to a lot of other traffic, and I wonder what, if you could just abstract the conclusions in terms of traffic impact, or if you'd rather defer to the applicant, that's fine too.
Like I said, we did not do a detailed professional traffic analysis. This was more kind of back-of-envelope calculations to just see if they were similar. And depending on which ITE factors you use, the church traffic could actually be as little as half of what you would expect from some offices. I think conservatively, it's safe to say they're basically comparable. I don't know that I would want to say it's half. Offices tend, depending on what type of office it is, they do tend to have sort of, you know, peak hours, morning and late afternoon. Now, visitors serving offices are spread out more throughout the day, medical offices, that sort of thing. So it's hard to just make a conclusion without really having details about what type of business is in there. I would say the main difference is the offices are typically going to be Monday through Friday. The church is more of a weekend activity. So it does shift the timing of the traffic, but I don't think it increases the overall traffic.
Any other questions?
So we're doing architectural review for a couple of doors and a little bit of sidewalk work?
Just...
Is there something else that I'm missing, or is that what it is?
Just because it's part of the project, and since we're here for the coastal development permit, it seemed like we should just discuss the entire project. I don't, I was not anticipating a lot of discussion about the doors, but please feel free.
No, I'm just, a question, that's the...
Like I said, normally, we would not, if all they were doing was changing the doors, this would be a building permit. But because of the coastal development permit, we do want to make sure that it's a complete description of the project.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and we can hear from the applicant during that time. So I do have one speaker's card, Elena Kuzic. Make sure the microphone's on, yeah. Yeah, make sure it's not flashing red.
I'm a co-sider from Montero and an attendee of Calvary Chapel for the last three years. Calvary Chapel has provided an enduring place of worship for the last 18 years on the coast here, and has blessed my family tremendously. I'm excited about the new move to the property off of Correio Highway. It will give the church room to grow, as mentioned here in the presentation. And our current location is great, but we're running out of room for our children's program and also the youth adult ministry. So we hope to, we hope you approve this item this evening to grant the use permit, which will allow Calvary Chapel to grow and to continue to be a value resource, valuable resource for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other speaker's card, but I didn't want to give the applicant an opportunity to speak and respond to the points made by Doug.
Thank you. I'm the applicant, Jason Silva, and actually, I attend the church. So I say that loosely, I'm sure they...
Make sure to speak into the mic there.
So, good evening, Planning Commission. I just wanted to make one thing clear, one distinction really clear. I wanted to clarify the description of use. Number nine will say, hopefully, exactly this, "The approved change in use to religious assembly shall be limited to religious worship and incidental religious education pursuant to 18.03.040, and not to include unrelated uses such as musical events, outdoor barbecues, and activities, private schools, recovery programs, childcare, or similar uses." I know that was a concern for some. I just want to make that super clear. I also wanted, secondly, to just tag on to the traffic conversation a little bit. There are several churches in our area, Mariners being one of them, you mentioned, Doug, and they've occupied a couple buildings in town, and I personally haven't noticed much traffic relating to their services in the evenings and on weekends. So just as a barometer for what we're doing. Also, there's churches right in town. We know some of those. And on the weekend, you would expect a lot more congestion, right? Because there's some big churches right there downtown. And on the weekends, I don't see much of that, even with all of the people we have coming into town to visit our town. Fortunately for the city, we are taking our big church, which is directly downtown, and we're moving it south of town, which will hopefully add a couple more parking spaces during the weekend for downtown usage. So I wanted to express that. It sounds like we're not going to go into this architecturally, but architecturally, we're just adding two doors, they're six-foot, to help with ADA, really, and with fire, and provide private access to the individual suites on the south and north ends of the building. So that being said, you know, I'm super optimistic that Calvary Chapel will be treated equally as other fraternal organizations in the area. We're super excited to have Calvary Chapel on our building, of course. I'd like to get those signs out in front, if we could borrow those. Who said I had to follow that guy? That was, I'm so glad he did not show my drawings. Thank you, Doug. But yeah, we're super excited, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other speaker cards. Not seeing anybody jumping up. We're going to close the public, we do. If you would like to speak, absolutely, please. You can go ahead and make your comments, and please fill out a green card when you're done.
Good evening. My name is Brian Heminger. I'm the pastor of Calvary Chapel in Half Moon Bay. And just to clear up, what I think is maybe is the elephant in the room, is that the Warriors are up 86 to 61 in the third quarter. I just wanted to put that I just wanted to put that out there to lay you all, put your minds at rest about that. And we're playing the Knicks anyway, so it doesn't really matter. But I moved to this town in nineteen ninety-nine, so I've been here almost twenty years now. And initially moved up here specifically to look into starting a church, this church in this town. And I remember shortly after I moved up here commenting to my wife, you know, if this church thing doesn't work out, I think I want to stay here. Because I just fell in love with Half Moon Bay kind of right from the start. And my wife and I now are making every effort we can to stay here forever. We just really love this town. And having been a pastor now, we started Calvary Chapel in, it was January two thousand and one, almost eighteen years to the day that we would be moving to this new location. We started at what was the Days Inn. Remember, what do they call it, the Comfort Inn now? We started there doing Sunday night services. Then we moved down to the community center right next door here after the Mariners had moved out. We were there for a couple of years before we had the awesome opportunity given to us by the Dooley family to be able to lease their building just a block and a half over here at four-three-six Parisma. And they have treated us so well and we've been so blessed to be in that building and the church has grown. And especially when we talk about growth in a church, I talk about as much the relationships between the people as much as the numbers or the size of it. And the relationships that have been developed in this church are priceless. I'll never forget them ever. But to be able to move to this new location, we see churches as a net positive for any community. And to be able to bring something like this to the south end of town where, you know, people, we tell people where we're moving to and they say, isn't that, is that like Davenport or something? And people have a hard time recognizing the south end of this town as Half Moon Bay. And so we like the idea of being there and being a part of Half Moon Bay at the south end of town, not to mention the great favor that we've been shown by the owners of the building, by Ken Mark, the upstairs tenant up there, who has been very gracious to us as we've negotiated building and parking things, and of course, the owners of the building as well. So we're looking forward to occupying the space there, hope we can get approved and are just grateful to be doing this in this town. We love this city and look forward to being here forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Any further comments or motions from the commission?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that the, what we're asking for is really a de-minimus change. In fact, I think, Doug, you said there's no increase in intensity of use, which again, when you say that, I'm not sure why we need a CDP, but if you say we need one, certainly a change of use. But I went by the property, it looks like they're sort of working on it at this point in time. And I see no reason that we should not approve this. So I'm certainly for the project and I guess I wait to hear if any of my commissioners are or not.
Mike, thank you. My questions about the traffic didn't suggest that I thought it was an inappropriate use. I just was concerned about safety if we would have a large number of people making turns. I think, you know, it's probably biased. The synagogue that I lived in when I was a child had a terrible accident after Shabbat services, so I'm mindful of that risk. It's probably an availability information trap, so be careful when they're making left turns out of that into traffic. But I am not overly concerned. I just wanted to understand the record more clearly. So thank you for your answer and thank you for your impassioned enthusiasm for the site. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't go forward with this. I think that the fact that there's a use permit attached to the act is what really triggers the need for a coastal development permit. It's not that there's an intensification or de-intensification of use, it's just a use permit. So I will be supporting this project with the change in title that Doug mentioned in his, in his draft. I gather that the applicant and the landlord are consistent with the changes. I haven't heard any reason to think that the conditions are not mutually agreeable. And it's certainly true that having them in the coastal development permit makes them easier to enforce. So if you are both all okay with that, then I am okay with that. Thank you.
It's too bad on the regulations, there's these glitches that causes this much work and this much expense to a group that just wants to move into a building. Good luck going forward.
I'll be supporting the project, so I'm ready for a motion.
I move the resolution next in order with the change in title that Doug referred to.
Second?
Do we specifically need to mention the additional?
Oh, thank you. If the second or agrees, we'll include the addition of item nine that was added to the conditions by a handout to the planning commission at this evening's meeting.
Yes.
Okay, we're all good? Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes you now, Ashley. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Chair, the chair. Before, before folks leave, I just, I step in and to just make a couple notes about process here and why you're here and because we've heard that feedback and we're sorry to drag you out to a planning commission hearing for a use permit like this. The city of Half Moon Bay's zoning code requires that all use permits that the city reviews come to the planning commission. It is customary for assembly uses, which includes churches and nightclubs and all kinds of other things where lots of people are in one space, to have a use permit. And there's some real safety needs around that, in particular, fire exiting and other kinds of things that get overlooked when the use permit is not a requirement. Other cities do allow for zoning administrator hearings of use permits. And so I'm just mentioning that because I've done a lot of these in other cities, but we could not do it here. And I just think it's something of note in our process and things for, food for thought for planning commission and staff. And thank you for sticking it out and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our last public hearing item. Item one D, coastal development permit, tentative parcel map for Schnell Family Trust. I believe Mr. Garrison, you're going to be giving us the presentation.
Good evening again. I'm, for the record, I'm Doug Garrison, the project planner. This is, it's a parcel map to divide an existing parcel into two parcels located at four-hundred Redondo Beach Road. Some of the background, it gets a little bit confusing in that there were a lot line adjustment that was, involved four lots that was approved under different ownership in two thousand and seventeen. And so it takes a while for the tax assessor to update their maps and so our parcel maps don't reflect that. And I did have a conversation with one commissioner and they were little questions about really what was out there. So we've tried to address that in the staff report. Certainly if you have questions, we'd be happy to get into it. So currently, there's a fairly large lot, has one existing residence on it. That was essentially part of this lot line adjustment. And so that red area is the subject lot we're looking at today. There are two houses there that used to be on one lot. And then with the lot line adjustments, they separated that with a lot line adjustment right between the houses. And they also had to upgrade all the sewer, they were on a septic system, that sort of thing. So everything had to be upgraded to current water and sewer connections. So the utility services are there, they're available to the new parcel also. They're not hooked up at this time. The parcel is vacant, other than that house. It's quite disturbed. There was a cinder block agricultural building over on the eastern side that was demolished. That was part of the coastal development permit and lot line adjustment from two thousand and seventeen. And just for reference, this area that's sort of south of that red rectangle, that's a totally different configuration with lots, but there is a pending parcel map under different owner for an eight-lot subdivision there that would be all residential. And you'll be seeing that application at some point in the coming months, so just as a point of reference. Other than that, the property surrounded by existing residential and a golf course on three sides, north of Redondo Beach, that's Wave Crest, undeveloped. The area directly across from the property is designated under recent mapping as potentially environmentally sensitive habitat area. Although the area closest to this parcel is classified as non-native grasslands, which have a little bit lower value as habitat as some of the areas about eight hundred to a thousand feet west of here. So the process, anytime you're doing a subdivision, you're creating more lots than you had to begin with. That requires, if it's up to four lots, a parcel map. So that's the mechanism that we are processing. In the coastal zone, subdivision of land is defined as development. So even though there's no construction going on, there's not a house being built as part of this approval, it is classified as development and so does require coastal development permit also. We did look at this from a sequoia standpoint, determined it's categorically exempt. Sometimes projects fit neatly into a categorical exemption, sometimes less so. This one does fit squarely into categorical exemption one-five-three-three-two infill development. It sort of fits into fifteen-three-one-five minor land divisions. We've included that sort of as supporting documentation. It requires consistency with the general plan and zoning, that there's no potential for environmental impacts. But there are some aspects of it, the definition of urbanized area, that would be problematic here. So the primary exemption is the infill development. So as we analyze this project, it's not a substantial change in intensity. It does create one additional single-family dwelling lot. As I noted, there is pending an eight-lot subdivision that was part of this one larger lot before the lot line adjustment. So when you look at this from a general plan standpoint, the housing element, that larger parcel was listed as potentially a site for sixteen housing units. So with this one additional lot, the eight lots that could be approved under a separate owner applicant, it's not as many housing units as were listed in the housing element, but it is close. And it's certainly consistent with the housing element goals of bringing residential development to that piece of land. So the other question we looked at, does it affect coastal resources, coastal access, scenic vistas, environmentally sensitive habitat area, archaeological resources, those sorts of things? In this case, it is located on Redondo Beach Road. That's a major beach access road, classified as a scenic resource. In this case, there is no actual construction, so it doesn't really change the visual character. But in looking forward, that assuming there would be a house built there at some point, it's not going to obstruct views of the coast or the hills to the east due to the orientation to the road and the distance from the beach. There's no construction proposed at this time, so there's no potential for unearthing archaeological artifacts. And again, it is a former dairy farm, it's quite disturbed area. In terms of zoning ordinance, meets all the requirements for minimum lot size. With this new configuration, the existing house will be on a lot where it meets all the setbacks, lot coverage, all of those requirements. One of the things we have to look at for consistency with subdivision ordinance is that anytime we create a new lot that has access to public streets, that all the services, utilities are available. In this case, as I mentioned earlier, they have upgraded the sewer and water connections on Redondo Beach so that it would be relatively straightforward to connect a new house if it was constructed to those services. Both lots would front directly onto Redondo Beach, they would have direct access to public roads. So it meets that requirement. So basically, it meets the standard, all the findings, they're in the resolution for consistency with findings we have to make for coastal development permit for the parcel map, meets all of those. It's consistent with the general plan, the local land use plan, the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and it falls squarely within a categorical exemption for environmental review. And so we're recommending approval of the coastal development permit and the tentative parcel map. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions of staff at this time?
Doug, could you go back to the map that you showed before? So I went by the property earlier. So tell me what the red line represents here.
That's essentially the current property boundary.
Okay.
The problem is, we use, we get our parcel map data from the county assessor's office and they have not updated their maps yet. So I don't have a clear, it is on the plans that were submitted for the tentative parcel map. It does show the current parcel lines. This was something I just created to put a satellite image under it, so it's a little bit easier to understand what's there.
Okay, so we're asking to put a property line where, compared to where it was before?
I don't have the plans because they don't really show. Yeah, what you have are two lots.
Right.
The new line will come essentially down here, dividing that. There'll be a, about a seven thousand eight hundred square foot lot for the existing house. And then the other lot that's undeveloped is seventeen thousand and something square feet.
Okay, so that, there's a house there at the corner, I guess that house is four-hundred, right, Redondo Beach Road?
Yes.
And the, there's a house on the left, that's four oh eight, which is not included in any of this, right?
No, that's not part of this.
All right, so I got that straight. Now, my next question is, part of the current newstie development, was this part of the development before or was this not part of it? I mean, how, I'm trying to, because I thought way back eight, nine years ago, we approved development. development.[1294.58][1294.58](pause)
I'm, I'm going to defer to Jill, who has more historical knowledge, predating nineteen eighteen, which is my tenure here.
In, in brief, this, this property was not a part, Bruce Russell is here, who put current state phases one through three, through the city for approvals, and, and if you need detailed information about it, I'm sure that Bruce would be happy to, to share that, but it was not a part.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, okay, with that, we can open up the public hearing. I don't, I don't have any cards for this item. If there are any speakers, do we wish to hear from Mr. Russell? Any question?[1355.13][1355.13](pause)
Not to put you on the spot, if...
Really, we're just, if, if the applicant has anything to clarify or correct from the staff report, you're invited to come forward, you don't, you have no obligation to present.
We have no obligation.
Thank you.
Okay. Let the record note, the staff report is excellent. So with that, we can close the public hearing, bring it back to the, to the planning commission for any discussion. Or a motion.
I have one, so I, I only have one, if I can get the mic to work. I only have one comment, and it's really, I'm going to support the project. I struggled a little bit with this, because we have a history in other parts of the town where we have had significant subdivisions, where we have conditions that have required lot retirement, and there is not a lot retirement condition here. As I have grasped the argument, the key here is whether, is how one subdivision contributes to the cumulative impact on coastal access. And, anyone who has studied integral calculus understands how DXs add up to a discrete quantity of impact. And I, I don't pretend to have the legal background to, to really grasp all of the details. I, I hope that for larger subdivisions, we'll continue to seek lot retirement, grateful that it has gone as well as it has, as often as it has. In the draft LCP update, we have conditions that call for lot retirement, and I hope that they will be brought in with alacrity. But we are working with a different LCP, and my comments are with zealous disinterest in the applicant or the project, but that is, that is my only concern.
Anything else, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. That project's approved. And that's our last public hearing item, so that brings us to the director's report.
Thank you, and we thank the planning commission, he had a challenging and kind of eclectic packet tonight, so we appreciate all the work that, that you put in for this. And, a couple other things, we want to thank Sarah Clark for being here tonight, on behalf of Shoot Mahaly, as our assistant city attorney, because Heather was, was, had a conflict tonight. Briefly, the director's report, your next meeting is January twenty-second, you will have an overview of the development and agriculture chapters of the draft local coastal land use plan, so we are, we are marching on. And, with that, we, staff would just like to acknowledge a couple comings and goings along with our chair. First of all, we are very happy to have Bridget Jet back with you tonight.[1585.42][1585.42](applause) Welcome, Bridget.
Thank you.
Yay.
Yay.
So happy to see you here. And then we have, I, I believe our chair, our vice chair, acting chair tonight, will have a few words, but we would like to sincerely express our appreciation for the service of Commissioner Demond, this is his final meeting with us, and it's been a pleasure to be staff to you on this, this commission, so thank you, and appreciate everything.[1621.13][1621.13](applause)
Yeah, just, yeah, I wanted to note, and thank you for your service. Commissioner Demond served on the planning commission for ten years, served as an alternate on the general plan advisory committee, served as the planning commission liaison to the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, and noted that you're, you're on the planning commission for the two thousand thirteen circulation element updates, so I think thank you for everything you've done for Halfmoon Bay, hopefully you'll be able to look at the new entry structure down at, down at the South Main Street, and, and appreciate your role in all that. Public service is, is important, and I appreciate everything you've given.
Thank you.[1664.13][1664.13](applause) Well, actually, I have a long speech, but no.[1671.42][1671.42](laughter) Actually, Jill, want to thank you, being on the commission for about ten years, certainly I've had my, no, I won't say it, you are by far the most professional person that I've dealt with in my ten years, so I want to give you credit where it's due. I think the way these meetings are run, the demeanor, the reports, I think are all excellent, so I think that's important. But I also want to give credit to my commissioners, I think, more or less, we're a collegial body, I think most of the time, we're on the same page at the same time, and hopefully my replacement will carry on in those same footsteps. So, thank you, service was fun, but, you know, ten years is a long time, so again, thank you, thank everybody, and I probably won't be a stranger if certain issues come up, but I'll be on that other side, so it was nice working for you all, thank you.[1752.51][1752.51](applause)
Any...[1754.51][1754.51](laughter) Aw. Aw. Can I move to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He needs to adjourn.